And according to the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building. The township website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this work session, regular meeting would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 9, 2023.
You all stand for the pledge allegiance followed by the invocation by Councilman Vasanella. May those assembled here today enjoy the many offerings our township has to offer. May we abide by the rules we have established, those of trust, fellowship, and ethics. And may we place service above self in our daily endeavors. May we always test ourselves in our efforts to be sure they are the truth, good for all concerned, of benefit to mankind, and provide peace and understanding. And may we keep in our thoughts and prayers all of the recent victims of unnecessary gun violence that plagues this country. Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Barison, Councilwoman Francois, Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Present.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Udine.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Councilwoman Udine and Amberson are at an event. Councilman Wright and Francois should be here shortly. They were held up. Accommodations and proclamations. Ms. Francois was going to do Mental Health Awareness Month. I guess we'll hold that till the second meeting of the month. And I have a proclamation. Join me at the...
Would you like me to take the minutes for this?
It's a great pleasure to present this proclamation. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the official municipal clerk is the oldest among political servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever more mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk's service at the information center functions of local government and community, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore I, Philip Kramer, Mayor of the Township of Franklin, do recognize the week of April 30 through May 6, 2023 as Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Anne-Marie McCarthy, and to all municipal clerks for vital services that they provide and perform, and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. This was written by our municipal clerk. Who does an outstanding job in very difficult times. She truly is outstanding. She's... The two people that we're allowed to work with directly are Mr. Vornlocker, who's not that much fun to work with, and Anne-Marie, who's great fun to work with and actually listens to what we say. So, thank you, Anne-Marie, for all you do.
Mr. Mayor, the next time, name and address for the record.
Okay. We're now time for public discussion. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. If it's all in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public. Please come up, say your name and address. May only speak once, no yielding of time. I think that's all the caveats.
Good evening. Linda Powell, 22 Buffett Drive. As some of you may know, Williams Transco has requested another two-year extension from FERC for the NESI project. For those of you who don't know, the NESI project is the Northeast Supply Enhancement Project, which proposes a compressor station to be built here in Franklin out by Track Rock Quarry behind the Buddhist Viehara, and also add additional pipelines, including one under Raritan Bay out towards Rockaway, New York. Both New York and New Jersey have denied the needed water permits for this project, and it seemed rather dormant, but now it's reared its ugly head again. For those who may not know, compressor stations are highly polluting, impacting both air and water, and are dangerous to all living things. None of this energy is for New Jersey, and New York also says they don't want it and don't need it. FERC has posted this notice of the Williams transfer request for a two-year extension on May 4, so we only have 15 days until May 19 at 5:00 PM to sign up as interveners in opposition to this project. Because there's a new docket number, even if you were previously an intervener, we all need to sign up again. We are posting step-by-step instructions on our website. The website is scrapnesse.org. That's S-C-R-A-P with a dash N-E-S-E dot O-R-G. The updated docket number and detailed instructions on how to intervene on the FERC website should be posted by the end of the week. There's a short paragraph that you can copy and paste onto the website with your intention to intervene against this project. The Steering Committee of the Franklin Township Task Force, also known as the Central Jersey Environmental Defenders, has been reaching out to our allies in New York and New Jersey. Our township manager, Bob Vornlocker, has been in touch with Dr. Barbara Cuthbert, a Steering Committee member, about the township intervening again. Councilman Ed Petosnik, who has been involved in this fight from the very beginning back in 2016, has worked on a new resolution for the township, which details reasons why we do not need or want this project. The Environmental Commission is also again taking a stand against NESI. We want to thank the town, the council, and the Environmental Commission for their continued support in protecting the health and safety of our residents. This is another fossil fuel project that we do not need or want to add to pollution and to worsen the climate crisis. Many of us working together were able to prevent this proposed project from going ahead and being built. We need again to work together to stop NESI. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bernadette Marr, 4 Norris Road here in Somerset, New Jersey. It just seems like Williams Transco will not take no for an answer. And as Linda mentioned and went through all the information so far, they've requested another two-year extension from FERC on their construction permit. It's been proven over and over, there's no need for this project, and we don't want it here in Franklin. We don't want any of these fossil fuel projects here in New Jersey. Again, the docket number is CP-17-101-005 on the FERC.gov website. And again, as Linda mentioned, you can also find instructions for intervening at our website, scrapnesse.org. Again, please become an intervener. That's the first step, and our time is limited for comments, so it's urgent that everyone here becomes an intervener and makes their opinions known. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Kiki Anastasakos, 3204 Enclave Circle, and a member of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group. I'm not sure if the council members have all seen an article, excuse me, that was published on May 7 on NJ.com by Jackie Roman. She's a reporter, and NJ.com, when I looked it up, is part of NJ Advanced Media. And I'll explain why that's important. The title of the article is "Trucks, Noise, Odors: Here's What It's Really Like to Live Next to New Jersey Warehouses," residents say. The article goes on to cover townships like Mansfield, New York, and our very own Franklin Township. It is not a very positive light that this article presents a Franklin Township. It mostly talks about, and I have a copy here, I'm sure my friends in my group can provide the council with copies if you would like to read it or to send you the link to the article. It talks about the toxic odors from the manufacturing plant, and it talks about people closing their windows, about... There is a video also, about two-minute video in the online article that shows the corner of Elizabeth Avenue and Schoolhouse Road with all the trucks going by, et cetera, et cetera. A very negative publicity for our town. Now, how big is NJ.com? With the consolidation of media outlets that happened several years ago, NJ.com provides content, and this is according to Wikipedia, to several state and local newspapers in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, to the point where an average of 12 million visitors read content that is in NJ.com because it eventually goes, being that the owner is the same. The same content is shared with the Star Ledger, as well as the Times of Trenton, the South Jersey Times, the Hunterdon Democrat, and the Express Times of Easton, Pennsylvania. And so, I'm really wondering whether an article that talks about a township that's plagued by warehouses and the Agilix plant is creating a very negative image and what we can do about it. The esteemed members of this council have, in the past few months, taken some very courageous actions with regards to these problems, particularly the ban on warehouses, restrictions on truck idling and truck weight limits, and we are grateful, we're grateful for that. We would like to request, and Councilman Vasanella spoke about ethics and courage and applying the rules that we ourselves create. So, it was extremely brave of this council to approve ordinance 4391-22, which, as you know, bans warehouses in the BI zone. I, and I'm sure the rest of the members of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group, would like to request that you follow the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, which, let me see if I can find the specific section, 4D, column 55, D1, which allows for local governments to apply retroactively ordinances such as the ban of the warehouses to develop the development projects regardless of the time of application. And I don't want to name specific warehouse projects. I think it's pretty clear which one I am referring to.
If you could finish up, please.
Yes. I think that that would be a new article that Ms. Jackie Roman would like, that we could all be proud of, and thank you for allowing me the extra time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Rob Peterson, Wilson Road here in Somerset.
Street number, please.
66. So I'd just like to make a comment about the, one of the budget items that's on the docket for tonight. You have an open space fund. It's an appropriation of 2.75 million out of the open space fund. And if you look in, you know, Section 2, some of the items that you're going to be using that spending on. So I know it's legal. I know it's allowed, right? It's permitted use out of open space. But I just wonder, you know, things like repainting the Princeton Highlands Bridge, installing EV charging stations, irrigation expansion and acquisition and installation of data and conduits at the municipal building. Again, I understand that it's legal, and you guys can do all those things that you want out of the open space, but I think it's a little misleading. I think it does not paint the transparency image that you guys would like to have. And I think if you were to take a poll of all the residents here in town, I think you would, I would be surprised. And I think you guys probably know this already, but I would be surprised if a majority of them knew that open space funds could be used in such a manner as this. So, I know you're going to be voting on some other things in the budget. I would much rather see a little bit more transparency, a little bit less kind of dipping into the open space fund for, okay, you want to buy a lawnmower? Okay, you know, that's at least arguable. But some of these other things, I think, are just a little bit beyond the pale.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Berkowitz. I live at 7 Mayflower Court in Somerset, New Jersey, in Canal Walk. I've met some of you at least several years ago. I have lived in Canal Walk now for about close to 13 years. I would tell you that 12 of those years have been pretty much almost ideal. It's only the past year with the tremendous development of warehouses that we've been beginning to change our view of living in Canal Walk. I also want to tell you that I do not live across the street from the proposed warehouses that will be built, but I live elsewhere in the community, and I, with my neighbors in Canal Walk and other communities, are very concerned about the potential adverse safety and health effects that will come from the warehouses, as I'm sure the council is fully aware. And I would tell you, it is particularly so in a community such as Canal Walk, where the population is getting older, and numerous people, maybe not numerous, but people have serious disorders, COPD, asthma, and some cancers. So it's a very real question, and the council is to be congratulated on realizing that. And in fact, first and most importantly, I came here to thank you for the issuance of the ordinance and your recent efforts to control warehouse development. I think you should be applauded, as the previous speaker had said. But I wonder if you could help, however, clarify something for me, and you'll excuse me if it's a little redundant on the previous speaker's points. I should have mentioned, by the way, I'm a retired attorney, 40 years in practice dealing with state and federal regulatory issues. Thank goodness, not land use issues, I would tell you, but regardless. Well, if I could, I understand Township Ordinance Section 4391-22 eliminated warehouses as a permitted use in the BI zone, which includes the Metler property. As I further understand it, notwithstanding the time of application, or TOA, as they call it, rule, such ordinances will have retroactive application when they relate to health and public safety. And that's in New Jersey statutes annotated 40.55D 10.5. And in fact, those were the grounds that you stayed in the warehouse clause when you issued the ordinance, okay? But I want to also bring to your attention, and perhaps you're well aware of this as well, even further support for this view was found in the publication by the New Jersey State Planning Commission Office of Planning Advocacy, which issued on July 20, 2021, something called "The Distribution Warehouse and Goods Movement Guidelines." And on page 22, there's a section called entitled "Air Quality and Health Impact Considerations." And I quote, "Emissions of air pollutants and greenhouse gases from diesel-powered delivery vans and tractor trailers represent the most substantial environmental impact from warehouse facilities. With mounting evidence that diesel exhaust poses major health hazards, reducing diesel pollution has become a public priority." So if you're not familiar with that, I would refer you to take a look at that on page 22. And based on the above, I respectfully submit that the planning board should not continue to hear the application from Link Logistics to build warehouses in B1, and should be advised appropriately so by this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Bryan. I live at 40 Bryant Court in Canal Walk. My husband and I moved to Canal Walk three years ago to a wonderful community, my hopes for the future. After surviving cancer twice, severe pulmonary issues, finished lung capacity, and other medical issues pertaining to my heart and lungs, my husband and I were looking forward to a happy and healthy day ahead. And now, after all I've gone through and survived, my quality of life is in jeopardy. What will my future look like? With the proposed plan of the fulfillment center, I fear my health will certainly be compromised. Air quality, pollution, diesel fumes from over 500 trucks 24 hours a day, seven days a week, a detriment to my well-being and lungs. I will be unable to open my windows for fresh air or enjoy outdoor activities. The prospect for my golden years is looking very tarnished. How can this board in good conscience let this happen to an adult community? None of you sitting here would want your parents to be filled with this severe problem and be putting them at risk. I implore you to make the right decision.
My name is Anthony Ricchio. I didn't come here to speak, but I did prepare something for the Planning Commission, and they didn't allow public comments. I'm an economist, urban economist, 40 years' experience, worked 10 years under Mayor Ed Koch, and we developed something similar to what you're facing in terms of environmental balance with economic development. You're not unusual. This is going on all over since COVID. I'm going to read here the document. One, you should be congratulated for recognizing with the ordinance that this is a quality of life, if you want to call it health. I'll read my statement. "In light of the recently passed Franklin Township ordinance to eliminate warehouse and distribution development as permitted uses in the BI zone, the planning board should suspend any decision on pending project. It's made clear during these proceedings and actions, taken by residents through demonstrations and analysis, that these uses pose a health and safety threat to the citizenry. This suspension should continue until such time that this township fulfills the obligation under New Jersey State Distribution and Warehouse and Goods Movement Guidelines policy adopted by the New Jersey State Planning Commission. The policy requires that all projects in this category, including B9, pass an environmental review measuring negative impacts on traffic, air quality, noise, and wetlands. Also include socioeconomic impacts on residents in the area and their rights to quiet enjoyment and protection from environmental harm. This is the motion responsible pathway for the township to take. The future is in your hands." I have my, I don't know if you have my statement in my resume.
If you could give it to the clerk. Thank you. Anyone else?
Angela Kavaleski, 1 Hale Place, Canal Walk. I have a photo. Could I share that with the board? Board, shows a flood that occurred on Metler's Lane on Sunday about a week and a half ago, and that was taken at 6:30 in the morning. The water did get a lot higher, and it comes right up to the Canal Walk homes. There was also an ambulance that was trying to get through from Western Canal Road to get to wherever it was going, and it was turned away by the police. I have a photo, and I shared that with you. Many homes at Canal Walk have experienced flooded basements. What happens when an ambulance cannot get to a critical situation? Ambulances are a regular sighting in our senior community. I saw one yesterday when I pulled into my driveway at 6:30. I looked on a short street with about eight houses. I looked down the street, and there was an ambulance in a neighbor's driveway on Hale Place. Yes, the township let homes be built at Canal Walk. Yes, it floods. The township and all the builders and engineers can design, approve, build, all the fancy, whatever you want to call them, retention basins, et cetera. But in the, and the reality is that the residents pay the price with the damage and the stress that it creates. My niece lives there. She was flooded quite badly. She was also impacted two other times, but I won't go into that. The night of the flood coming home on Canal Road, and when the road collapsed, that's a county road, collapsed into, she sold her car the next day. She had a Mini Cooper. The basins don't always work, these retention basins. There's one near my home that is clogged right now, and it will not be repaired. That's another story. That's a Canal Walk problem. In summary, two warehouses covering large areas of ground built on wetlands where they plan to cut down hundreds of trees can only make the situation worse. It will cause water runoff. It will cause flooding, soil and water contamination, and millions, with millions of square feet of impervious surface that will only increase and add to the water runoff that is already in that flooded area. We need to be very, we need to very carefully consider the consequences of allowing the B9 project to go forward. Again, I thank you for everything that you've done so far for us and listening to us, but this is a definite concern for the people who live there. I do not live near Metler's. I'm on the other end, closer to the canal, and so does my niece live down there, and she flooded because the water goes down, and I don't have a basement, so I can't flood. But I thank you again for listening. Thank you very much.
Angelica Granados. I live in Canal Walk also, 3307 Jackie Hall Trail. Last month, there was a fire in Indiana, a big one. At the same time, around the same time, there was a fire also in Schoolhouse Road. The fire in Indiana was, because, was caused by the plastics that is stored, that was stored in the warehouse, and that because of the plastics and the fire, it emitted poisonous gas. And the people were, the people in the, like, within half-mile ranges were evacuated, and over that, past that half-mile ranges, the people were, had to do sheltering. And over that, past that half-mile radius, the people were, had to do shelter in place, and which means that they had to close all windows, and they cannot leave the house, and they had to turn off the air conditioner. Now, the B9 is a spec warehouse. We don't know what they're going to store in it. Many products are made of plastics, so what are you going to do if fire that big happens in Franklin Township in Schoolhouse Road? And how are you going to evacuate the people in Canal Road, in Canal Walk? Many of who, of them are not, no longer ambulatory. So, and also even those, if you have to shelter in place, that is also a very bad situation. We don't know whether, you know, like, what products will be stored in B9? And also, we don't know what products are being stored in the warehouses. Are they being inspected? Or how often are they inspected? So we have to think about what will happen if a fire that big happens in this area. Thank you.
It's Johnny Tibbs, Somerset, New Jersey, 25 Parkside. I am sorry that the principal people that I wanted to come here to talk to are not here. My conversation was geared towards Kimberly Francois and Carl Wright, and of course, just left Mr. and Mrs. Bristol. And I think they're gone for a special reason. I think everybody in here knows why they're not here now when I come to the mic. And it's appalling that the situation that the Fourth and Fifth Ward is going through right now because of, like Mr. Wong said last time I was here, it's a conspiracy. Yes, you tell Mr. Wong, yes, there is a complete conspiracy going on in this town. And everybody knows what it is, but won't nobody say anything about it. I'll say something about it because I'm in love with my black people, and I do everything I can to make their life less miserable than what it's being prepared to be like. Number one, there were 10 kids that got killed several years ago in the community because of lack of places to go to, lack of community centers and so forth. There was a center that would get built, even came out of Bob Warlock's mouth one time, that would be built for at-risk youth, a community center. It was built, but the, it was changed from a community center to a youth center where it would deny all of the at-risk individuals in the community and all of the adults in the community. While that was done, goes along with Mr. Wong's conspiracy. Secondly, there is no communications coming out of the community center, what, the youth center, y'all, your youth center. There's no communications coming out to the programs that's going on while it's in the hood. The center was built in the hood, and the hood is not being informed of the programs that's going on in the hood. There's nobody, they have no outreach people to inform the community that's coming from, that's coming out of the Township Youth Center, which they built in the hood. Another thing, the times that the center, that youth center is being closed, and the times that the park is designated to be closed, I'm asking you guys, please open the center, open the park, since they can have nowhere else to go but the park in their own neighborhood, let them be there, let the time go to 10 o'clock during the summer. Yeah, I know you don't want to do that because you don't live down there. You know what I'm saying? You don't have to be imposed by this, these rules and regulations. They don't have nowhere to live now. Because as one leader said, racism is priced nowadays. Oh, just the most important thing. Will you please tell your people on the council that's in charge of SCAP, please tell them to move the Somerset Community Action Program back in the community in which it was designed to be like? I don't care who's running it, that means they don't know what they're doing. I even talked to some citizens in Mansville today. They say, yeah, we don't want them in, in no way. Okay, please, put the Somerset Community Action Program, if you, I know you ain't gonna undo that, you can say you ain't gonna undo it because you're gonna tell the Kimleys and, and all the boy stuff, I know that. But please, the citizens in the Fourth Ward need some help, some economic support. I'm sorry, the people that leave here, that's why they ain't here now, because they knew Johnny Tibbs was gonna be here. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jan Brant, 22 Bryant Court, and I live in Canal Walk. Last night, I was at the Mansville Municipal Building at their Township Council meeting. I must say, you guys are a better-looking crew, but don't tell them that. But anyway, there was a group that was educating the council on warehouses and all, and they're, they're educating them, like Mansville, everything runs off to Mansville. When there's floods, things just run off there. But, so anyway, gave me an idea that, I apologize if you all know this already, and I know Mr. Warlock, or when I'm all done, will give a 10-minute speech about everything that I said was wrong, but I won't believe that because I did my research. Anyway, so Link Logistics is, you know, moving into, is proposing these warehouses where they really shouldn't be grandfathered in anyway, but they are the leading owner of last-mile logistics real estate designed to meet the needs of modern supply chain. So you might ask, well, what is last mile? Last mile delivery refers to the very last step of the delivery process when a parcel is moved from a transportation hub to its final destination, which usually is a personal residence or a retail store. And that probably explains why they have like 60, why they want to have 60 truck bays, because there's going to be a lot of that going in and out. And this is the New Jersey State Planning Commission. I think last time when I spoke, and I said that this proposed warehouse is probably going to be a last-mile fulfillment center, people said, no, no, no. But if you go to the State Planning Commission Warehouse Sighting Guidance, there's three types of warehouses. There's distribution facilities, fulfillment centers, and last-mile fulfillment facilities or stations. And of course, it's not going to be an Amazon because it's only proposed to be 215,000 square feet, but it's going to be a last-mile fulfillment center. Why this is important to know is it's going to create lots of trips. And, you know, all the proposed warehouses in, I spoke about this before, in Franklin Township go by that ITE 150, which is regular warehouses. And what that means is the, the traffic that they propose, there's a certain calculation you use, and that's the amount of traffic that is proposed according to that. However, if it's a last-mile fulfillment sorting center, the calculations for the traffic are usually going to be maybe 1.7 times more. So what is happening over with the warehouse, B9, what B9 is proposing, the warehouse that shouldn't be grandfathered in, is according to the calculations, if it wasn't a last-mile fulfillment center, it's going to be 980 trips in 24 hours. 980 trips, the Little Road, Metlers Road, and Schoolhouse Road, that's one, that's a trip every 1.46 minutes. There's going to be a trip. However, if they use the right calculations, that's just for a regular warehouse, if they use the correct calculations, it's actually going to be 1,666 trips per 24 hours. That's trucks, cars, everything. That's a lot. And what I worry about, that creates, you know, the diesel trucks, you know, creates noise pollution, creates air pollution, and it really is, it creates something that's going to affect our health, our safety. And I know a couple, I don't want to keep echoing what other people have said, but according to the MLUL, if there's been a new, and I praise you and thank you for having the warehouse ban ordinance, and I know that it was said that this won't apply to B9, however, it should apply to B9 because our health and safety and well-being will be negatively impacted with that warehouse over there. And according to MLUL, it says, and I think, if I could find this piece of paper in 47 seconds, of yes, "Notwithstanding any provision of law to the contrary, those development regulations which are in effect on the date of submission of an application for development shall govern the review of that application for development and any decision made with regard to that application for development. Any provision of an ordinance except those relating to health and public safety that are adopted subsequent to the date of submission of an application for development shall not be applicable to that application for development." So I hope you all make the right decision about that, but it seemed pretty clear to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe Hoffman, 5 Congress Court. This past week, I spoke to a preeminent noise expert in the state of New Jersey, and he had a chance to review the B9 application, and he was surprised at the lack of data in there regarding the noise impact on the two communities that live in close proximity to where the proposed warehouses are being built. And what he told me is that today, there is sophisticated technology that based on the size of the buildings, the number of bays, the topography, and so on, these algorithms can accurately predict the noise that will be emitted from these warehouses. And given the close proximity to Summerfields and Canal Walk, he was surprised that they haven't been required, Link Logistics, to do this analysis. So I'm just encouraging you, if you can advise the Planning Board to demand that Link Logistics do this analysis, it's fairly expensive, not for them, but it would be for us. And I think that data would be very helpful, as they will be literally across the street from these two developments. Thank you.
Jim Johnston, 34 Norwich Place. I want to give a firsthand report of what the huge turnout we had at the May 3 Plating Board meeting. You had to be there. We had a, by my estimate, I'm estimating about maybe 300 people at one point. And at one point, we had about 20 people in the, in the back, there weren't enough seats. We, about 20 people or 30 people were standing in the back because nobody was getting enough seats for everybody. So they didn't give us a chance to have, to speak publicly. So if there's any members of the Plating Board who are listening to me here, could, next time, could they please, you know, get more chairs, have somebody come in the back and making sure everyone has a place to sit down or, and, you know, and also, I think it's pretty incredible because that Board of Education building is located on the far end of town. That's a long drive. I mean, for me, it's about a seven-mile drive to get there. I imagine for anyone from Canal Walk, they would have to drive 11 miles each way just to get there. And the fact that we had 300 people there to make that long drive, I mean, that's very impressive. Imagine how much more we could get if it was held here. So, and also, just, oh, one more thing. I don't know if this was, if this was a factor, but at this meeting on May 3, they had the access road to one of the parking lots blocked off. So everybody was being steered into one parking lot. And when I got there, about 15 minutes early, even then, the parking lot was near capacity. I mean, what happened to all the people who came and couldn't find a place to park? All right, so, you know, that's, that's another question. So, and when I, I stayed for about a half hour, I left at 8:00, and as I was driving out, they still had that access road blocked off. So I don't know. But, but that was a big turnout, so you had to be there. So the next meeting will be on June 21. I hope everyone can make it. Thank you.
Hi, Beverly Rubenovitz, 67 Bayard Road in Canal Walk. I back up beautifully to Metlers. Haven't seen me in a while because I've been in warm weather through the winter. I'm home. We had two beautiful days, and I opened my kitchen sliding door, and there is more truck traffic now than a few months ago before I went south. I know you have an ordinance. I know there's a weight limit sign out there. I have no idea what's going on, but I'm shocked about the number of trucks that are on the Metlers. And that was about 6:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning. It was beautiful, had coffee, and I had to close my door because I would have started crying that I'm back in Canal Walk. The traffic, the truck traffic was bananas at 8:00 in the morning. So I, you're not going to have a policeman sitting, police car sitting there, who's going to weigh the trucks, but it's been bad. Thank you.
Anyone else? See, no one else. Mayor, I'll motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay. Motion is carried. I'm going to read a statement. "Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Rest assured, mayor and council will take all of your comments under advisement as we continue to deal with the issues that arise from the proliferation of warehouses in Franklin. I think it's important to understand what steps the mayor and council have taken in response to the concerns expressed in these chambers. Being, beginning last year, the council adopted a series of ordinance to combat the future expansion of warehouse development. Acting on then newly issued draft guidance from the state, the first ordinance adopted greatly expanded the buffered area between the newly constructed warehousing and neighboring residential properties, effectively limiting the size and scale of proposed warehouses. The second ordinance, following the formal adoption of the state guidance, removed warehouses as a permitted use in any zone within the township. Immediate impact of these ordinances was the filing of approximately 10 legal challenges by potential warehouse developers and property owners. Those lawsuits are pending, and on the advice of our township attorney, and in order to protect the interests of our residents, it is not appropriate for us to comment on any legal issues raised in those lawsuits. That is why this statement was prepared. We can assure you that the township attorney and staff will vigorously defend the township's legal position." The second immediate effect of our actions is that no application for warehouse development has been filed, no new application for warehouse development has been filed since we passed the ordinance. It was one warehouse that did file to expand, but no new warehouses have filed. I know many of you are focused on the B9 warehouse development adjacent to Canal Walk, contrary to some statements that were Contrary to some statements that were made, not tonight, but on other nights, the property was unaffected by the 2020 zoning amendments that created the B1 zone. Finally, in response to suggestions from members of council and the public, we have also authorized the township-wide truck traffic study, and we will continue to explore all other avenues of investigation to ensure that our zoning regulations serve the primary purpose of protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. But because B9 is currently middle of sessions, I've been advised not to comment on that in your interest and in the rest of the town's interest. And I hope other council will heed that advice from our attorney. It is now time for council comments. Mr. Vasinella.
Thank you, Mayor. So I see Linda's left, Bernadette's still here. Thank you for filling us in on what seems to be a problem that just doesn't want to go away. I can't speak for everyone, but I think we're unanimous, and our councils desired not to see that project see the light of day, and I'm sure we'll be in communication if it keeps moving as far as what we can do, what we've already done in the past to deal with that. Thank you for keeping us informed. We had a public works meeting tonight. Councilman Potasnik and myself were there, and a lot's going on. I'm just going to mention what's actually being awarded tonight on our consent agenda as far as some major resurfacing roads that had been allocated in last year's budget, but as some always are bumped to the spring because there's only so much we could do in a calendar year. But for the folks who live Equator Avenue, Cedar Avenue, Garfield Avenue, Griggs Street, Ethel Street, Hollywood Avenue, Leona, Dendi, and Pierce Street, the portion that goes from Davidson to Elizabeth, we're awarding a contract tonight, which means the work should probably be coming very, very soon. A lot of other projects, paving, curbs, water, gas, et cetera, our sewer is happening also, but bring them to the public as they're actually starting to go into construction or bids are being awarded. But our water department is very active as a lot of the water system is still getting much needed and very good upgrades. If you see our water department out there, they're basically making it so our infrastructure, your infrastructure, is good for another 50 and more years. So we are hard at work underground. I know a lot of the other, a lot of the concerns are about what's going on above ground, but that's also a major part of what we do, and I just wanted to mention that. That's it, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, and although we have another meeting, for whatever reason, Memorial Day is coming up, I believe we're going to have our parade back to what it was a few years ago, and even bigger and better. It is one of our, I'm going to say, one of the only township holidays that the township collectively goes out, and many of us, along with many other groups and organizations in town march in what is really a beautiful event. So it's on Memorial Day morning, but you'll hear more about it, and of course, it'll be advertised on our website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kimberly Francois.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I was late. I do work in New York City, and my meeting that I had ran over 5:00, so that's why I was late. I apologize. On my way in, I was stopped by one of our committee people by the name of Linda. Does a lot for the Transco. She told me on the way in that one of our constituents was bad-mouthing me pretty bad about not having a community center in the 4th Ward. He was one of the people that were a big proponent of us having a youth center in the 4th Ward, which was much more needed than a community center. We do have a community center here in the municipal complex. Alls I can say is you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. However, what I would like to say is we're having a one-year anniversary coming up on May 20th. It'll be one year that the youth center has been open. It's open to the public from 12:00 to 2:00. If you've never been over at the youth center, this is the opportunity to come over, have a tour, find out what we've been doing for the past year, and get a tour of the facility and find out what our plans are for the summer, for the youth, and also the programs that we are planning for the year to come. It should be a really nice celebration. And then from 3:00 to 7:00, we're going to open it up and have a youth festival and have a lot of things, a lot of activities for the kids. All of what we do over there is free to the public, to the youth that live in Franklin Township. And I'm happy to say that in the past year, we've had no major incidents with our youth. You hear about all kinds of things that go on in the world today with our youth. We've not had that over there, which is a good thing. So even though it's not called a community center, it's a center for our youth, and they seem to embrace it, and they seem to love it, and there are, some of the youth are there every day, and it's a positive thing for Franklin Township. I know there's a lot of negative things going on in the world, but I'm happy about, even though there's been some complaints, I'm happy about what we've done so far, what this council has done, what this governing body has done for the future of our youth. And quite frankly, they are our future, and if we don't invest in them, we can forget about the United States of America. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry I couldn't be with my colleagues. Last meeting, unfortunately, I fell ill. I'm wearing a mask just to make sure I don't get anyone else residually sick. So I don't have too much to report, just want to, you know, uplift Councilwoman Francois and the work that she's center. Congratulations to Anne Marie putting up with us. So, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Potasnik. Oh, I'm sorry. You were leaning forward, I didn't, I didn't see him.
Invisible man. Invisible man.
Wow.
Must have leaned forward.
Wow. Mr. Onijaka.
Okay, thank you. I just want to use this opportunity to congratulate our township clerk, Anne Marie. She's truly an example of a dedicated township clerk. When you need her assistance, she is always there. Within all my time as a council person, a council man, she has been there and very supportive. So I want to use this opportunity to say thank you, Anne Marie, for all your help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Potasnik.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to extend my appreciation to the clerk. Williams Transco filed an extension application to FERC just last week, and they give you a very limited window with which to make any comments. And we are one week into that today, and very quickly turned around the resolution that's up for consideration tonight. And I'll give you some highlights of that for those of you here now that might not stick around for the business portion. But she is always extremely responsive, whether it's in like sort of ceremonial resolution about something that happens in the news with a young person, or like the police officers and rescue workers who saved folks' lives in the car fire. It's, that's just the beginning of what she does to make sure we're organized and every I is dotted and T is crossed, so we definitely appreciate that. I also want to thank Linda Powell and Bernadette for coming tonight, in addition to Kirk and Barbara and everybody that's part of the task force on the Transco compressor Station. This compressor station would be closer to my house than the nearest grocery store, and, you know, it's of great concern for many of the reasons you might imagine, but it's two, well, it's 32,000 horsepower, two 16,000 horsepower, power natural gas engines constantly running. So, you know, add that up, it's quite a lot of emissions. And what was interesting as we were thinking about a response to the application, you know, it's sort of like a vampire coming back from the dead. New York denied the permits because it didn't meet their strict water quality standards, and New Jersey indicated it was going to deny its permit as well. And the company has done nothing whatsoever to address any of the concerns raised over the last two years. Now, one might say, oh, you know, this happened or that happened, we need more time, but they've done nothing. And they're just looking for a rubber stamp extension from the federal government to keep this bad idea going into the future, which takes resources away from much-needed improvements in the community. But a couple of things that have changed with time, and I just want to highlight them, and there's quite a lot, it's like a page and a half of new facts in addition to the old facts. It's bad for your health, it's unneeded, New Jersey would get all the risk and none of the benefit because the gas goes under the Bairdham Bay, which has got a lot of toxic areas, turn up all kinds of sludge and pollutants out to Long Island. But you would think New York wanted it, but again, they denied the application. So New York doesn't want it. And then in addition, just last week, you might have read in the news, New York is also banning the use of natural gas appliances. So they're going to need less natural gas, not more natural gas, less natural gas than today in the future. And so the idea that this would make sense to pollute our community, to get it to a place that's not even going to have appliances to turn on that would use it is just, is ridiculous. In addition, the IPCC has stated once again that climate change is real and human-made and advancing quickly, but they also say that we don't need gas across the world and that this is a problem and a huge greenhouse gas emitter. In addition, Governor Murphy signed a number of executive orders, one looking into a study on the future of natural gas so we can meet our climate goals and our air quality goals to reduce emissions to 80% 2006 levels by 2050. And natural gas won't allow us to do that. So that basically is, the future of natural gas is bleak, and that's something that he said. He also committed us, the governor of our great state, Phil Murphy, to 100% clean energy by 2035, and that does not include natural gas. So there's just another reason. Our Attorney General sued the biggest fossil fuel companies for lying about the fact that their product was polluting our air and causing climate change. They hid it so they could make profits. These are not great actors, and in fact, Williams Transco's application is full of all kinds of erroneous errors. This council, and acting as a Board of Health, have pointed a lot of those out. We have also requested of FERC to do a health impact study, which they have not done, and without those pieces. The list goes on of changes, but the project made no sense when it was denied years ago, and it makes no sense today. And so I'm hopeful that this council will continue its vigorous defense of our community to protect our quality of life from something that is really not necessary and we don't need to be doing. We're moving away from that in every step of both our state of New Jersey and New York where the gas, if approved, would go. So that's a little bit of the highlights. It's about a five-page resolution, and I'm thinking we're going to be in this fight for a little bit longer, so we'll have to, you know, open our eyes back up and remind ourselves of what a bad, disastrous, unneeded, dangerous project this is. But I appreciate the clerk for helping us to get it to our agenda today, and hopefully my colleagues for supporting it. And that's my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Never take the train.
No, take the train.
It's a rough time to take the train. New Jersey Transit, you gotta love them. Sister to Sisters Network, they're having a function this month, and what it is, is, and I'll read you what they sent to me, it's a real talk with M.D. Correll Odean and Ms. Dorothy Reed, a breast cancer advocate, Black Women in Clinical Trials, an opportunity, let me close this up, an opportunity to increase knowledge and be a part of the solution. Who should attend? Everyone diagnosed with breast cancer and those that have someone with it. Join us for in-person town hall Friday to 19th, 2023, excuse me, Friday, May 19th, 2023, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the auditorium at Frederick B. Cohen Comprehensive Cancer and Blood Disorders Center, Newark Beth Israel Hospital, 201 lines and Schuyler Avenue in Newark. Having seen what they do, having lived with some breast cancer, you need to be able to take care of yourself, and that's something that you should do without question, okay? I believe Ms. Francois is still on the, Ms. Francois is still on the Board of Directors, and she has done an outstanding job in helping that organization and keeping me enlightened. So I want to thank her for that. Also, June 19th, gotta love it, it's coming up, ladies and gentlemen, but only we will have ours on June 17th. It'll be a parade starting at the Pine Grove Middle School. Are we starting at Pine Grove?
Pine Grove.
It's the same word.
Manor Elementary.
Elementary school.
I've been elevating the school.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm elevating the school.
It's kindergarten and first and second graders. They didn't get to middle school yet.
I'm elevating, I'm sorry. And we'll go down Hamilton Street and stop at the Neiman Williams Park, and our grand marshal would be Betty Watson Coleman, Congresswoman. She would be there to give our, our knowledge, our fruitful knowledge, our enlightenment, as they say. So if you want to, definitely march with us. We're meeting at Pine Grove Elementary School. And we want everyone to be out there because this is not a minority issue, this is an everybody issue. And I see Mr. Karagi sitting up front. It's a his issue. Everyone out there in the audience, it's your issue. And we talk about brotherly love and getting past racial discrimination, things of that nature, and sometimes we just lose sight that sometimes it's the little steps that lead to big steps. And this is just one of those steps that move on. So I definitely want everyone to come out. We have floats, we're trying to get the high school band and every other band to come. I'm about to bother Jimmy over here because I'm with the Boy Scouts, baseball team too, but they got a game that day, so I don't know. But that's just my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Very eloquent, Mr. My comments, first, I'd like to thank Assemblyman Danielson. He was instrumental in getting us a grant for half a million dollars for our police command bus. It's been a long time in coming, but we finally got notice that we will be receiving it. Been looking forward to replacing the bus that had to be towed to sites when it was needed. That's how badly in repair it was. The youth center, I'm sorry I'm going to miss the celebration some more years than I want to think about. I was in college and I met a woman who I learned was gay, and that was my introduction to the LGBT community. And every year, I go with her to the New Hope Gay Pride Parade. So I'll be there, and then coming back for an EcoCorps, and maybe I can come into the bit of the celebration afterwards, but I want to give my excuses now. Mr. Peterson, those are logical questions, reasonable questions. Mr. Vornlocker is, has more at his fingertips, the answers to them. I'll just give it an overarching comment that when you buy open space or you build a park, et cetera, et cetera, you need to support it. The more open space you buy, the more money that needs to go. And I understand that the, how you couched it, like you saw that a lawnmower is okay, you understand that. Mr. Vornlocker will explain the relevance of the other issues. Vornlocker.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So certainly, Mr. Peterson did raise some, actually...
Mr. Vornlocker will explain the relevance of the other issues. Vornlocker?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So certainly, Mr. Peterson did raise some, actually, what I think are my own opinion. I guess hopefully council too, as you adopt ordinances related to them, are some important projects that are in our parks or open space properties. So we'll talk about the conduit. The conduit is actually something that we had looked at to try to find the most economical way to provide internet access to Middle Bush Park. The conduit is to run from the senior center into Middle Bush Park through the property we own in the back of the municipal complex to provide internet access for security cameras within the park to protect our assets as well as provide card access to the concession stand to provide greater access via remote control from our municipal building to the, to the park to allow greater access to the bathroom facilities and also to provide remote access for the sporting, youth sports organizations that utilize the building. And it will also be able to allow us to provide internet access, public internet access to those people who enjoy the facilities and would like to access the internet in the park. So that's the conduit, part of our open space budget and capital ordinance. The bridge painting. The bridge is located on an access road that accesses both open space property that the township owns that was part of the development of Princeton Highlands in the late 1990s and early 2000s. And also that access road that is a township road and a township bridge also provides access to the park in Princeton Highlands. It provides access to the parking area for people to access the trail network on our open space property that connects further into the John Clyde Grasslands Preserve. The park, bridge, was deemed in need of maintenance and repair. It's a steel bridge and needs to be painted. Obviously, it's a bridge on open space property and therefore part of our open space inventory. And that's the type of money that is spent on maintenance of our open space properties, as the mayor mentioned. The EV charging stations that are referenced are, so we received an EV charging station as part of a grant to pay for the EV charging station that's being installed at Middle Bush Park. The money in the capital budget is for the electrical work that's necessary to provide the electricity to the EV charging station pedestal that'll be placed in close proximity to the concession stand near the playground area that's most frequently used. Obviously, we've spoken about as more and more people are utilizing electric vehicles, the need for public electric vehicle charging stations is there. This is in one of our parks. The charging station itself was provided for in a grant. The irrigation is for, again, Middle Bush Park. It's upgrades to the irrigation system, to the natural turf soccer fields and the natural turf softball field. The township has invested a great deal of money in the natural turf fields at Middle Bush Park. The irrigation systems are a vital part of that to ensure that our investment doesn't go to waste in dead grass. And those soccer fields are utilized by, you know, well over 1,000 kids who participate with Franklin Township Soccer. So that's the purpose of that capital item. And I think I covered them all, Mr.. So moving on to just my quick two items, and I'll be done. I'm sorry, I should take that back. One quick item. On the township website, there is notice now of the registration process for the upcoming Franklin Township Youth Police Academy. It will be held July 13th and 14th, and then the week of 17th through 21st. Orientation is on the 12th. This is for 8th through 12th graders. There are 30 seats available. Application deadline is June 1st. Application is available online. It's a very, very popular program that fills quickly. So if you have an 8th through 12th grader that is interested in attending the Youth Police Academy, I would suggest strongly that you get your application in immediately. It will be filled quickly, and it's one of our more popular programs here in the township. So if you have a child who's interested in that, get it in now. And that's what I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Francois, weren't you the initiator of that project?
We did that for the Franklin Youth Initiative years ago. And every year, the program is much more popular, and there's always a waiting list. It's very, very popular.
Kids are very excited about it. It's a great program.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I want to thank the township mayor because I love Middle Bush Park.
You thank the township mayor or the township manager?
Township manager. I never met a better field, and they do play soccer out there. So I want to thank you and I want to thank everyone else for always keeping the park in mind as far as continual upgrades in Franklin Township. So I definitely want to thank you for that. And just one more thing. Anybody out there watch Franklin High School? Damn. They're winning.
I assume you mean the sports.
He says with surprise. They went off and.
Yeah, I mean, the tournament of champions, they're doing all kinds. Our famed reporter there, he reports it all the time, and no one pays attention to it. It's in the newspaper. So, you know, come on, guys. Read the paper, find out how good your sports teams are in Franklin Township. Go to a game, do something. But like your sports teams out there, including the education, but. Do your sports team, okay? Because that's a good thing to do. It rounds up the person. Like everybody up here, it rounds off the person. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I can only enforce the only speak once up here. Mr. Embarrasson, you made it in under the wire. You're looking snazzy tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just returning from the governor's mansion. We had a celebration for Asian American Pacific Indian Heritage Month at the governor's mansion. So there was a nice event there with a lot of people and performances. So I know you were a little sensitive about getting the budget passed, so I wanted to make sure that I vote.
We need six votes to pass the budget, so five people wasn't enough. Thank you for coming. Okay, we are now on to council discussion item. There is none. And now the approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. Township Council Work Session, regular meeting of April 25th. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion, any change? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Obstein.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
The attorney corrected me. Five votes for the budget, but six votes for the bond issues. Approved for those of you keeping track. Approved the warrants. Warrants are how we pay our bills in the amount of $16,183,392.89 on May 9th, 2023, are presented to Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item or ask a question about the item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
On to item number 12 of the agenda. The copies of the agenda are next to the clerk. I present the following resolution for the Township Council for their consideration. Resolution 23165, authorized to read the calendar year 2023 municipal budget by title only. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
It is appropriate now to have a public hearing on calendar year 2023 municipal budget as introduced. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public on the budget only. Anyone wishing to speak, same rules.
Anyone? Mayor, seeing no one come forward, I'll motion to public portion of the public hearing on the 2023 budget.
Second. Moved in seconded. All in favor of closing the public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, but public session is closed. I present the following resolutions to the Township Council for their consideration. Resolution 23166, adoption of the calendar year 2023 municipal budget as introduced. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the budget? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading. Ordinance 4408-23, an ordinance accepting a conservation easement from Elion Franklin Development Group LLC for the premises known as Block 88.02, lots 13.01, 25, 26, and 71.01, also known as Route 27, 45, and 47 Veronica Avenue, and 102 Bennett Lane is presented to the public for public hearing. And final adoption, the public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are open to the public on this item only.
Mayor, seeing no one come forward, I'll motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is adopted. I mean, public hearing is closed. We have a motion on the item.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
These are only introductions of the bonds. We only needed five votes.
That's, the financial consultant and I are keeping score over here, Mr. Mayor, and we're winning and you're losing. Five and five today.
So you can go home, Mr. Embarrasson. Go back to the governor. Sorry, my mistake. So these are ordinance on introduction and first reading. Ordinance 4409-23. So what we're going to have now is a series of ordinances that we're introducing on bonds to pay for the items in the budget that we have bonded for. And then we will have one on capital for the items in the budget that we're going to pay cash for. So these are going to be boring and redundant, but the attorney says we have to do them individually, so does the financial advisor, so here we go.
I have the legislation. All four of us agree.
Ordinance number 4409, 4409-23. Bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements and equipment acquisitions buying in this township of Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, appropriating $5,273,500, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,325,000 bond or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption and first reading and posting publication in accordance with law on public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Wait a minute. No.
May 23rd.
It says the 9th here, but May 23rd.
I apologize.
And you, you get a whole week. We gave you a week.
Give me a week.
So May 23rd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka? Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance number 4410-23, bond ordinance providing for the 2023 road improvement program buying in the township of Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, appropriating $5,560,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,282,500 bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. And the foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law on public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on May 23rd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that although the bond is for 5 million, almost 5.3 million, that we ended up settling, so to speak, for approximately 3.5 or slightly under for what we're allocating in 2023. I know there had been some talk of doing more, some talk of doing less. But this 5.3 approximately is how we bond where we put.
No, it's for more than just roads.
That's what I'm saying.
Sidewalks, roads, cracks, ceilings, a number of different things.
We put several things together, and I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't all specifically for roads, but a lot of other infrastructure. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance 4411-23, bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements for the winter, for the water utility buying in the township of Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, appropriating $6,225,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $6,225,000 bonds or notes in the township to finance the costs thereof. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved. Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance number 4412-23, capital ordinance appropriating $2,750,000 from the Open Space Trust Fund to pay for various capital acquisitions and improvements for the township Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law on public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Motion to.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? So I would just like to say again, understanding why Mr. Peterson asked the question. The 2.7 million is not just for the bridge and the conduit, et cetera. It's for many other things. The 2.7 million is for the entire open space budget plan. Um, any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka? Councilmember Batasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Consent agenda. The items A through S is listed in the consent agenda portion of the meeting. Our presidential township council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Anyone like to pull an item or discuss an item? Item C. Yes. Microphone, please, Mr. Wright.
I think the councilman wants an explanation on it.
Uh, does he want an explanation or to pull it?
Yeah, 23168, um, for the McAfee Water Main replacement. Uh, I want to thank some of the, uh, that are on the finance committee because they do a great job in taking care of the money for, uh, the township. And when they've come back to us that this is something that it's easier to do because it's better to replace the, the, the pipes and the, uh, the mains now than to, uh, do a little bit now, a little bit later. And we all know the story on that. It's better not to throw good money after bad money. Uh, and I think Mr. Vornlocker could probably give us a little more detail.
Sure. So, so this, this is an award, um, for a little over 1.8 million dollars to replace the water mains on McAfee Road, Boulder Lane, Evergreen Road, and New Kirk Road. So it, it's actually five streets and, and this will replace their, the water mains and, and the service connections to all of the homes on those streets. Um, in particular, it's funny, you know, we called it the McAfee Road area replacement. But one, one road in particular, I've had conversations with a number of, of residents over the course of the last couple of years about the condition of their road and, and we identified the need to replace this water main. Um, so rather than come in and obviously waste money paving a road that we then have to replace a water main, and that's Evergreen Road. Um, if you're, if you're not familiar with Evergreen Road, Evergreen Road is on the west side of JFK Boulevard in, in the area by, uh, um, Burger and, and, uh, and, uh, yeah, by Burger Street. That's actually off of, uh, off of Burger Street, Evergreen. Um, the interesting thing that we found out with Evergreen Road is that, um, the existing water main, uh, we're going to leave and we're going to put in a new water main. And the reason we're going to leave the old water main is that when Levitt, who built that development in the 1960s, installed the water main, it's not in the road. It's behind the sidewalk, um, on the side of the road. So rather than rip up the sidewalk and the people's lawns, we're going to put a new water main in the road